Calling to order the Needham Select Board meeting for December 19th. The first item on our agenda tonight is public comment. I've been notified that we have several public comments, so let me start by calling who I have or recognizing who I have. We would ask that comments be limited to three minutes and the board typically doesn't engage in a conversation, so, but we are happy to take your input and your feedback and determine what follow-up needs to occur. The first person is Todd Glasskin. Todd, if you would like to come on up.
Hi, thank you. Just speaking here?
Just speaking there.
Great. First and foremost, thank you to the town, the fire, police department, the school department, Department of Public Works, engineering, building department for what you did yesterday because yesterday was incredible and yesterday was incredible seeing how everyone came together and really made it a much better experience, so just a thank you. What I'm speaking of is, as I'm sure you know, about four months ago on August 8th, about 150 families in Needham experienced massive damage to their homes, including myself. Many of us came here at the time to a select board asking for help in solving what seems to be a 20-plus-year-known problem, undersized storm drains that were identified two decades ago and just, in a study that the board did, which just can't keep up with water. We were told to file claims. A lot of us have filed claims with the town, with the town's insurance company, all of which were listened to and summarily denied. So basically, none of us received coverage for something we don't understand why it hasn't been addressed. Yesterday, many of these families once again experienced the exact same thing. I was one of many who were literally outside for well over an hour with a shovel, standing over a catch basin, videoing part of it. I can send the video. But it was one particular catch basin on Cary Road, which we just watched go higher and higher until it disappeared and for about an hour did not reappear. And we're clearing debris off and it's either undersized. I know a camera was sent in previously, but it can't keep up. And yesterday's storm paled in comparison to what we had on August 8th. And, you know, if anything, what this is proving is it's hard to write these off as thousand-year storms or 100-year storms. I think these storms are here to stay. They're strong, they're persistent, and they're not going anywhere. And it seems that there are just issues with the drain systems which are not equipped to handle not only thousand-year storms but regular storms, which yesterday was not eight inches of water in an hour, it was three inches in a day. And during one hour, if people weren't home, about 11 people that we know out of the 150 already, you know, replied to the group that they had massive damage. And the numbers are continually coming in, including people who repaired their work, you know, just finished the project and now are, as they described, living in an island once again. So the town's resources came through, you know, amazingly, and I feel bad that the amazing people we have can't be matched with infrastructure. So just asking that the town manager, the Department of Public Works, you know, just work with us in any way we can to, you know, get these specific storm drains that are now known issues, you know, rectified in any way we can because it's very hard to just stand there with a shovel watching. And when you look two houses over one way, two houses over the other way, there is no water on Cary Road. There is no water on Highland Ave. And it's just one specific drain that refuses to hack. And I walked over four houses and I saw a beautiful drain that was just pouring water in and everyone was fine. So if these specific issues, you know, any help we can get, whether it's with claims that are existing, which, you know, people don't know at this point. We've been told, do you appeal? Do you sue? And I think people really are at a loss and especially going forward. Just coming here to ask for help and just put it on the agenda.
Great.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Looking, the second name I have is Ellen Fine. Do you have Ellen on Zoom?
I do. I see Ellen on Zoom. I will invite her to join the meeting now.
Okay.
Ellen, if you'd like to unmute, if you don't mind asking, I got unmuted or something.
Hello, Ellen. If you would please unmute, we're ready for you.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you. We can hear you.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Luckily, yesterday I didn't flood as badly as a month ago and part of the reason I did not, uh, four months ago, excuse me, part of the reason I did not is I took some matters into my own hands and I did some permaculture tricks in my backyard, known as building swales, which help to absorb water. Another thing that also does this is rain gardens. These can easily be instituted on burns or on people's land instead of lawns. The reason I bring some of this up is I think that as a community, we need to address mitigation in different ways than there were currently. Certainly, we have to look at the storm basin infrastructure, but we also have to look at some of the things that we are doing that are causing the problems. When you use chemical land care, when you pull up a bunch of trees, when you put in sod, you're making, you're destroying soil structure, which means that the water can't seep into the soil, which means that things overrun and may flood as well into people's basins. Certainly, as I said, we do have to deal with the infrastructure. And the other thing I want to bring up to you is I personally reached out to the town government in several departments, seven calls to the senior center, who called the health department and the town hall in my behalf. I called the town offices. I called DPW. It's four and a half months later and no one has called me back. This, I believe, is because I am a person who was not of means and I was not able to file an insurance claim that sued the town or approached the town in any way. And what I was asking for several months ago when I spoke and what I'm asking for again is for the select board to invite all of us, and I'm sorry, Todd, I have to correct you, it's more like 250 families that went through this. There were several families that never posted on C Click Fix, several in my own neighborhood. No one has come here, no one has addressed the problems, no one has spoken to us. And I think it's really important for the town to be responsive. There are many people here now who feel utterly let down. We feel dismissed, we feel ignored, and especially those of us who deal with impoverishment or disability, as I do. I actually got sick from the storm. I deal with chemical injuries and because I had to do so much of the cleanup myself because my town was not there to give me yellow trash bags, call in the Salvation Army or the Red Cross. I also called myself the Red Cross 23 times and didn't get any help. So I guess what I'm saying is that when, you can't just declare an emergency, you have to act like it's an emergency. And you need to invite those of us who've gone through us to create a town-wide committee to help deal with this issue and to be making recommendations as we go forward. Please do that.
Thank you, Ellen. The next person who we have who's asked to speak tonight is Rebecca. And Rebecca, you don't need to sit down if that's uncomfortable, but come closer to the mic so it can kind of hear you.
So, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I really appreciate it. My name is Rebecca Tarantino. I have lived at the corner of Mark Tree and Oak Streets for 22 years. So to Todd's point about the 20-year mark, I can attest to that personally. I am here today to discuss the town flooding concerns. I do first also want to thank the DPW, the police, and the emergency responders who worked tirelessly the past 24 hours to help fix and clean all over town. This isn't a criticism of anyone's work. They've helped solve our problems before addressing their own homes and we're grateful for that. This is an expression of fatigue and frustration for my family and members of our community. Everyone who lives around me is elderly and is not on the internet. They don't register C Click Fix, they don't send emails to come to meetings. I have been dealing with the same issue for 22 years, that now what we have seen has gotten worse. So what we have seen is there is a, I don't even, I don't even know the terminology, but there's a, there's a manhole and there's a hole under the ground that goes into the, you know, the town's water system at the intersection of Oak and Henderson. For the last 22 years, we have seen when there's a storm and that drain gets overflowed, DPW, after many calls and many hours, sends in a crew with, it's a big truck and a pipe to drain that water out. And when they do that, the water recedes. And we know they do it always in response. It's never in advance. And so yesterday, Oak Street was a river. There were waves lapping against my neighbor, my 87-year-old neighbor's house, and he's lived in his house his whole life, to the point that his entire garage flooded. He keeps bees, his grill is in his garage, he has no children at home, and his entire basement flooded. And his basement floods every time it pours. So it's just become matter of fact for him. So we, 14 years ago, put an addition on our house. We put an extensive drainage system under our backyard, perforated pipe, we have a drum in our driveway, a drum in our backyard. Yesterday, Oak Street came up through my fence, on my driveway, down into my backyard. I have steps down into my basement and they were flooded halfway up to here and just came streaming through the door into my basement. So it's the first time that that has happened. So what happened was then they came, they mitigated the problem on the street, and the problem was addressed. So all of a sudden, the water started to go down and then we were just left to clean up the mess. It had just started to seep into all the rest of our basement, but it had started. So we were able to stop it before it got too bad. But there's a solution to the problem on Oak Street before, while we wait for infrastructure improvements. And the reason I wanted to come today is I see it's on your agenda. I see that there's a delay storm mitigation assessment. I see that's on your agenda. I find that alarming. I also see that you have a budget discussion for the next four years and infrastructure budgets on your agenda. I find that alarming that those two things are together. So given what happened now, given what happened four months ago, I think we're at a really critical place. So I know Rome wasn't built in a day, but 22 years is too long to be suffering from the same problem. I'm here to ask for two things. One is that the town make a plan to address this at an infrastructure level. The crisis is getting worse and has to be prioritized. But in the meantime, I would like to ask that town management and DPW treat rainstorms like they do snowstorms. So snowstorms, everybody jumps into action. There are billboards asking for people to drive plows. There's stuff that happens in advance, both from a structural standpoint as well as from a response standpoint and a communication standpoint. So the town does a great job. They look for staff, they remind residents ahead of time the precautions they need to take and do their best to get ahead of it. The past two storms have taught us, we are always surprised and we're always reacting. Getting ahead of it would involve two pieces. One, have an emergency plan in place that involves deploying DPW early to the typical problem areas. This may involve hiring emergency staffing. And two, having a town-wide emergency communication plan in place, phone, email, Facebook, to tell residents the storm is coming and to clear drains and other precautions. Yesterday, Needham Public Schools and Needham Police Department were amazing on their Facebook pages. They were great. DPW was delayed, the town was delayed, the Facebook page was delayed, but that was all we got. No emergency alerts on the phone, no emergency emails, and that seems very achievable. And I would like to see this happen preemptively townwide and through more than social media. As far as Oak Street's concerned, it's very clear to those of us who live there that sending that DPW truck with that pipe ahead of time waiting would save all of our basements. It would save a lot of time. It doesn't seem to be a big deal. I know we're just one of a few locations, but it feels like a very solvable problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. And the next comment we have this evening is Ross Donald.
Thank you very much. My name is Ross Donald, 25 H Chambers Street. I'd just like to pass out a few things, something to feast your eyes upon. This was from Denise Galick's legislative report, and we're interested in, the residents are interested in opening up the 164 Linden Street, former community building that's been used for storage. It's really not the highest and best use. I've worked with previous executive directors and we were never really able to get it off the ground to get it open again. It should only take a couple of weeks. I'm basically here to talk about a couple of things. One is what I'm calling an information clearinghouse. There's a lot of information that's available. The first thing I picked up on was density. There seemed to be a density number comes up if you, depends on what you choose as basic numbers. So it's a ratio. So if you have Linden Chambers at 11 acres, including the wetlands, and you have 152 units, your density to start is going to be different as opposed to seven acres, 152 units. There are two Linden, Linden one and Linden two, and there are either 20 or 23 units per acre to start. So that's pretty good. And yet we want to tear them down. So, anyway, the information clearinghouse, I think, would be of interest to, and it's also continued with TCHOC because we've got a lot of these committees that are talking about the information and want to have the same, we don't want apples and oranges mixed and so on. So TCHOC, I think, is going to be the particular one that's going to be looking at things like the annual plan of the Needham Housing Authority. And I've tried to get some information on that. I gave it to some clips of that report and I've discovered that we may not have to rely on the housing authority itself for some of this data because the state has all this if it's all up to date. And my question is, the information that was, that I sent around to your email really doesn't show any CPA expenditures. So how can that be? So, and I'm asking what, if the state has a more up-to-date kind of thing or they have separate books, they have a separate webpage where the developing, developer part of the housing authority has its own webpage and the old webpage is sort of left uncared for. They're five months behind, at least five or six months behind on the video recordings. You know, I'd like to, I want to do a sort of a media forensics where I can look at the video and say, did they really say that, you know? And how is it different from what somebody else says or interprets? Information, there's often references to previous work, a study, housing study of 2004, the facilities master plan of 2019, which I have. And you look at those things, they, the proponents of the development want to make it sound like it's inevitable. We've been talking about this very project. We targeted Linden Chambers for years. And my argument would be looking at these things, yeah, it's come up for several years in the past and it's been rejected. So what does that say? It may not be inevitable to do these, to do this tear-down buildup. And here's another example of information. This is the Needham Housing Authority newsletter. Density is questionable, refer to relocation plans, and this is, this is a good one. The residents who are being asked to move will forget first choice of the new units. I'd identify that as blockbusting. If you agree to go along and move out, you get the first units. The implication being if you don't agree, you have any questions, you want to work on a better plan, you may, you may get moved out and you may not get moved back in. That's sort of the implication. And that's what happened on Mission Hill when I lived there. They drove people out and so, and that's, I don't think they're trying to do that. I think they're trying to be as helpful as possible. The other...
Mr. Donald, if you could just wrap up.
The other issue is, what refers to here is the Linden Street, 164 Linden Street Community Building, which is used for offices in part, but more for community. There are photographs of Christmas parties and things like that. That's what they're using it for now. It's not the highest and best use. It's inappropriate, it's unnecessary. We have vacant space that can use that and I, so that's, we're making this into an issue. This is the battleground. When I first brought this up, the chair said, that's the first building that's going to be torn down. So they've changed their tune on that because we may have other support, other friends. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you, Ross.
We appreciate the update. All right. I do want to start tonight by acknowledging that we had another just horrible day yesterday in terms of the storm in town. I know that we have a number of residents who are still, who remain without power and are looking at a second night without power, and that is hard and especially when the weather is so temperate and warm and people have also lost everything again in refrigerators, all of that. So in addition to flooding issues and other things that's happening, we certainly all wish there were something different. It's not, there's no good words. I mean, it's a shame. So, and I don't think it looks like a white Christmas either. That's probably a good thing at this point. So let's move on to the next item on our agenda. The first, the first item we have this evening is to introduce Gabby Queenen. If Gabby can come up. And I thought I saw Charis. There's Charis.
Can I just add, I think, for the board, our heartbreaks, right, when it got flooded out and, you know, the damage to the homes was hard.
Especially when it's the second round of damage to a home.
Yeah.
Right.
And we'll be talking more later, but I do, there have been a number of actions by the town, by you and Charis and the department meeting with, at this point, I think the correct term is hundreds of Needham residents in their neighborhoods, but we'll come back to that. Right now, we're here to talk about Gabby, who I'm delighted that Charis can introduce.
Yes, I'm very excited today to introduce the first sustainability manager for the town of Needham. We did a very exhaustive and competitive process to find Gabby. And when we started our pre-screening process, we asked a creative question about how to explain to somebody who doesn't brush their teeth why they should brush their teeth. And Gabby gave a really great answer that was, really showed how she could think on her toes and reason and really think creatively. So we're very excited. She also has a very strong background, is a background in planning experience for environmental planning, and we're very excited to have her come on board. I probably have given her like 120 hours worth of tasks already to complete in a regular work week. And I think, you know, we've talked about it amongst a lot of the department heads and we feel like what she'll be helping us with is like 5% to 10% of what our current workload is that we never have time for because all these other issues end up coming to the forefront. So Gabby's first day was yesterday, which was an interesting day to start, especially in my building. And the first thing I said to her was like, this is what you're here to fix, as we have a 62-degree day in December with rain and winds that we would not, you know, a blizzard, yes, but sort of tropical storm-like environment, not what we typically expect in December. So we're really excited to have her, really to start creating this new office and look at the climate action plan and figure out how we can operationalize some of this.
And I want to observe that although Gabby's first day was yesterday, her first evening on her own time, I believe, was last week when she attended the Climate Action Planning Committee on Thursday night and met with them. So I'm grateful for you jumping on board to start and we're all actually working not to continue to give 120 hours' worth of work. Charis said in a week, I think it's probably more like in a day, given the volume of ideas and things that we need to have occur. But Gabby, I would love to give you a chance just to say hello and introduce yourself to the community.
Sure. Hi, everyone. For those I haven't met, I'm Gabby Queenen. I'm the new sustainability manager. As Charis indicated, I am coming from an environmental planning background. I was with Horsey-Witten Group for about the last two years, working on a slew of different projects, but many which touch on climate resiliency, sustainability, stormwater, land use, zoning, kind of a whole variety. And I'm excited to join the team. And I know I've said this to Charis and others that I've met with, but I really am impressed by the town staff, by residents who really bring just an incredible wealth of knowledge. And I really see my role as figuring out where I can add in with my own expertise, where there's gaps, but really just try to scale the impact of what's already happening here. I think there's been some, yeah, really tremendous work that's happened over, over these last few years. So I'm, yeah, excited to get to work and, yeah, get in the weeds.
Get in the weeds. I like that. Anybody want to make any remarks? Kathy?
I'm really happy that you're here and I think that there's so many areas that what you're going to do touches and we have not had one person to look across all those areas. And with your background, which is so impressive, I think you're going to do great things for us. So thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Welcome to Needham. I know you were at the CAPC meeting last week. I thought we scared you off.
No.
I'm happy we did not, so.
Thank you.
This'll be great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yay. We've been waiting for you for a very long time. Very happy to see you. There's going to be a lot of stuff coming your way. So prepare.
I agree with everything she said. There's a lot of stuff. 120 hours may keep going that direction for a little bit, but I think you'll be, you'll have enough support or, you know, you'd be able to thrive and not survive. So be around for a while. So we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I also want to say thank you to our town manager and to our finance director for their creative work to figure out how we were going to fund this and how we could make it happen sooner rather than later, a need that we really clearly saw and identified as something that could be helpful in moving all our efforts forward. So I want to say thank you. Thank you to Charis and all the credit to Charis. Great, thank you. So we will see you again, I know.
Yes. Yes, you have. Yes.
Have you not met?
The series of storms and illness and...
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Excellent. We all got to meet first. The next item on our agenda is our climate action roadmap. So I'd like to invite Steve Frail and Nick Hill, Hank Caff, to come forward.
Thank you.
So the climate action group has been meeting for...
About a year and a half.
A year and a half now. And when we started, the goal was to put together a plan...
That's right.
...to kick off our MUNIAG effort. And so you are here to update us on where we are with the plan...
That's correct.
...and MUNIAG and all those different pieces that are key to our success in moving forward and limiting our carbon footprint.
That's right. I also just want to welcome Gabby. We met with her yesterday and had a very thoughtful conversation. And one thing that did come up is that there is a lot to be done. And so one of the biggest challenges is prioritization and making sure that we focus on the bigger things. And the other thing I just want to say before diving to this is that the weather yesterday just underscores how important it is for us to have a plan. And there are a lot of details in here that deal with things like stormwater and flood risk and mitigation efforts that both the town can take, but as well as private landowners. I think that's maybe the big theme of the climate action roadmap is that there isn't a government-only solution to this. The vast majority of the carbon emissions that are driving events like yesterday are coming from private sources. So homeowners...
Private is all of us.
All of us.
Yes.
Yes, we are all private. Just about 2.5% comes from things that the town does. Now, there are things that towns can do around storm, storm, but, you know, everybody plants a tree, everybody who, you know, chooses a garden instead of a lawn, everybody who chooses a garden instead of a driveway that's got eight cars in it. All of these things help.
People who think about a swale, as Ellen Fine suggested.
A swale. Yeah, so there's many of things. So that said, we've made great progress. We've had dozens of people participate throughout this, this entire year and a half. We've had a number of people from the staff, so I want to thank Kate for dedicating her staff both to the weekly meetings, sorry, the monthly meetings, as well as when we had several working groups and advisor groups that we put together to help work on the plan. So there's been a lot of time there. There's been volunteers from across the town as well, so business owners, residents, community organizers, people in houses of worship. So we had a number of people who participated throughout. And then there were several hundred people who responded to a survey on climate that was sent out last year. And all of that is fed into this plan. We have four things that are actually in flight right now already. So we've hired a sustainability manager and that was one of our top recommendations. So thank you again. The town meeting just adopted the specialized code for all new construction, which will begin July 1st of next year. We do have the municipal aggregation program, which is now in public comment. So I want to make sure that anybody who's listening, who'd like to weigh in on what that plan would, shall be, goes to, I think it's...
Select Board? Well, OTM. It's going to OTM@needhamma.gov.
OTM, okay.
Miles nodded, so I got the right address.
Right. So, and that's through January 5th.
Correct.
And this, I think, is the...
And we've not received, as far as I know, any comments unless you, oh, you could be holding them, right? I haven't seen them yet.
Okay.
So people should go ahead and send, please.
Yes. So that's, and there's a number of steps that happen after that. So we're still months away from that program potentially launching, but this is a great opportunity. And then I know the planning board is also working on some solar bylaws for parking lot canopies, as well as commercial rooftops. So we've actually been able to accomplish a lot in the time that we've been focusing on this, this plan. So just a high level, I'm not going to go into the plan itself, but we're at a near-final draft. We've been soliciting feedback from all of those people who've been involved in the development of the plan to maybe correct wording or, you know, if there's anything glaring missing.[1791.57] I don't expect the final plan is going to differ from this very much at all. It's going to be pretty, pretty close to this. Partly because we have a timeline and a budget to make it. But we're expecting that, that this is something that'll live on for multiple years going forward and it'll be updated periodically as necessary.
So the committee, when we last talked, we talked, we did go through the different action items and people should expect we're going to see some tweaks in terms of which pieces are in fact already underway or, or the status of those.
Correct. So if you look at the icons in the current draft, it doesn't fully capture everything that's already in flight or prioritized.
Yep. And the other observation I would make is we will want to bring this to a public hearing for members of the public. I understand from the town manager that she's allocated January 9th and that that is our target. So we will be, people should put it on their calendar now, but that, that will be the night when we'll open it up for members of the public to give us their feedback as well. But I'm grateful to all the citizens who have participated in the number of subgroups that we've had and, and have provided input at this point. Yeah.
One of the things I would emphasize is it's not so much a plan as a roadmap in that it's, we're not laying out the way forward. We're saying, you know, this is how we think and we're, it's going to be an iterative process. And we were talking with Gabby on Monday about the need for that iteration. And as we go forward over the next few years, okay, let's, what do we do next? What, you know, and it's this, really a roadmap for the whole town, for all of this private and public.
That does bring up one open issue that doesn't need to be resolved today, but our charter ends this coming spring. So one of the questions will be, and Gabby brought this up in our conversation as well is how do you envision this, this committee living on or evolving going forward once we have the roadmap? Since this has been our two-year charge, we're near the finish line on this, should be thinking forward.
I think that is important for us to figure out what is going to be the appropriate level of oversight and continued work to understand what the prioritization might be of next steps and how we continue to focus on, the committee has really helped us focus on what are the highest impact items that are achievable for us, you know, in this moment in time, given where things are. And as technology continues to evolve and time goes by, those achievability items will change over time and we'll have to reset and figure out what those are. All right. Questions for the board now that you've had a chance to give this a read? I don't know who wants to start. Kathy, do you want to go or?
I mean, when, when you look forward, because this is such a great report and there's so much in here, what would be like the top things? And I'm so impressed with what you guys have led us to achieve so far, but what do you think are the top things ahead?
You know, there's no one silver bullet and we've actually accomplished or are in the process of accomplishing many of the very large items. The biggest source of carbons for our town are things like electricity generation and municipal aggregation is really trying to take that on. The state has other efforts for that as well, the renewable portfolio standard, which requires more and more renewables. And then the buildings, heating and cooling in buildings is another big area. So we've passed the Specialized Code, which is really going to encourage more heat pump adoption instead of fossil fuel heat systems. It's not required, but it's encouraged through the code. I think the next big challenge for us is to think about how do we electrify our existing building stock? That's a massive challenge and it's one the state still has to do a lot of work on to make it achievable for towns to take on as well, cities and towns. It's, it's a mammoth effort and that's where most of our carbon is. Transportation be the last. So anything the town can really focus on to decarbonize our transportation. And that doesn't just mean electric cars, it means pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly areas as well. So those are the big themes. And there's a lot of components that kind of build up to that.
Who wants to?
Yeah.
Thank you for this fantastic work. And I love how many concrete suggestions there are in here. And this is a plan that one could actually follow, which is refreshing. Really nice. I guess I'm just thinking about how we work with our new Sustainability Manager to really translate that idea that it needs to be private action along with public action. And I guess this is not a question, it's really more of a comment that I'd really like to see some form of this committee remain standing to assist. Because I, I mean, this seems like a very big task and just seems like it'd be great to have some kind of standing council.
Yeah. I would add that we did talk to Gabby yesterday also about Green Needham and the ability of other groups like League of Women Voters, et cetera, to help magnify some of the activities that the town might be involved in. But certainly even the victims of these floods, I think a lot of them are reaching out now and asking to be heard. That's an opportunity to, to try to magnify, again, some of the actions that are being recommended.
I think too, it's interesting because at the CAPC meeting last week, we got talking about flooding that's not necessarily wetlands, you know, thinking, well, I don't live near a stream. Well, we're still getting flooded and, you know, how we redefine that and present that, that, you know, this is a climate change action and that resiliency applies to all of us who don't live anywhere near a body of water.
But who may live at the bottom of a hill.
Yes. Or in the middle of a hill.
Or in the middle of a hill.
Exactly.
Marcus, do you want to add anything?
Kathy and Heidi took both of my questions. So what are you doing? I was thinking about, you know, with our Sustainability Manager, how that was going to be impacted or how her impact and input and expertise would help with that. So I thank you both for saying those things, but just appreciative of the amount of hours and everything that go into this amount of different voices and the collaborative efforts that went into where we are right now and progress that is being made, understanding the reality of the situation and where we are as a town, as a country, as the world that we're in. So just appreciating that we are pushing this and pushing it forward and trying to do it at a speed that makes it not as hard to catch up. So just really thankful.
Sure. Well, we look forward to hearing how the Select Board and the town and Gabby could best utilize us going forward. Whatever it takes.
Do you want to add anything?
If I might.
If you might.
It's amazing how much CAPC has done since you guys were formed. I mean, to think about so many goals have been reached. The draft is amazing. I'm loving, I'm loving the Mondrian chart, as I said before. But it makes a good point. It shows that it's not the town's problems, it's, it's all of our problems. It's residential housing. That's where the biggest chunk is. There's also a lot, you can see where the other low-hanging fruit is, like we're at 50%, 52% of our homes are heated still by oil. So, you know, that's Gabby, that's a thing to fix. So it would be interesting, yes, and we should keep the committee going in, in a shepherding role to get, push it through. Thank you for doing this.
So I do think we'll have some discussion about what the next goals are for the committee. I mean, obviously they've achieved the goals that we gave them in the initial charter, right? But there will be a different set of issues now that we have a plan and that we're trying to figure out how to follow it. So that is absolutely work that
One of, one of the last thing that Gabby asked us when we sat with her yesterday was, are the working groups and the advisory groups that we gathered for this roadmap, are they still active? And they're not active, but they haven't been dissolved. And that, she raised a very good point about the, the resources of the couple of hundred people that we pulled in for that. And hopefully we can still use that same network, maybe different people, but pulling across the town and across the various communities.
Well, and taking advantage of new people. We had a new person show up at our meeting, in fact, and welcome to Needham. So I think all of that's true. I mean, the benefit of the structure that you built in building the plan is that we have a lot of people who we know are energized and willing to work on this. And we also know that all of us are the solution. So we're all going to have to be mobilized. And I think figuring out how to do that effectively is a big part of this. So for people who are members of the public, I would like to encourage you to, to take advantage of the time and the plan that's available in the packet and available online on the Climate Action Committee website and in addition to the packet.
Yes, we have a email address too, if anybody wants to send anything directly to the committee.
If anybody wants to send anything directly to the committee in terms of feedback, they should send it to
Climate@needhamma.gov.
Climate@needhamma.gov. So take advantage of that. We would love to have your feedback and we look forward to seeing people at the public hearing on January 9th. Okay? I also, while you guys are here, I want to take advantage to say thank you to Hank.
Yes.
Hank was recently awarded, yay Hank, the Leading by Example Award from the state. And we are grateful for all the work that you've done since you came to Needham, where you have been nudging and pushing and mentioning and suggesting and putting your foot down on occasion about various things that the town needs to do related to the environment and sustainability. And that is a lifelong passion of yours and we are glad you've brought it here.
Continue to do it.
Thank you. Please do. You have permission.
I think Hank can say he started all this.
I just helped.
There you go. So thank you. Cheers to Hank and thank you guys for all your work in this.
Thank you to Charis for nominating.
Thank you to Charis for nominating. It all comes back to Charis. There we go.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the consent agenda. And the notice of approvals, one day out of the license.
Any discussion? I noticed we have all the victualers. I think those are all now going through our auto-sign process, right? So for this board, you are never going to have the experience of sitting there and signing like a hundred of these in a night. It takes forever. I'm just going to say to you, but it's now all electronically done. You are so blessed, you don't even realize. With that, we can vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero. It is approved. Thank you for, for doing that. The next item that we had on the agenda was a discussion of asbestos and lead. My understanding is that Mr. McDonald is in fact not available this evening. So we will defer that item to January and we look forward to having him in to have that discussion. And then the next item is the proposed winter gas main work by Eversource. So if Charis would come up, and I see we have a few other people, I have one named Buzz Krasinski, Peter Bowman, if you would come join us at the table. And I don't know anybody else.
Unfortunately couldn't make it. He's kind of wrapped up with the productive restoration.
Yes. I don't know if you have any other members of your team you would like up or if you're, you're good, Charis? All right.
Thank you. This is fancy. So I am here today to present to you an opportunity that came to us from Eversource Natural Gas. Over the past two years, we have provided Eversource the opportunity to work in Needham off our regular street opening permit requirements. So typically Needham has street opening permits that are issued to the public between the months of April and November. Historically, that's the construction season in New England, although things seem to be shifting a little bit. Eversource, after the, the issues that occurred up in Andover and Lawrence, has a pretty strong mandate as far as making sure that their mains are upgraded. And so they have a certain amount of miles they have to complete on an annual basis. And in order to accomplish that, realistically, they can't be limited to the April to November timeframe. So they have approached us about doing some work off-cycle. And the two locations that they've proposed for Needham are the neighborhood of Damon and Tanglewood. And you'll see that's a pretty extensive neighborhood that's involved. So they would be in that neighborhood for basically the duration of a year, starting this January. And then the other neighborhood or the other area they are in is on Great Plain Ave, parts of Maple, Mark Tree, and then up Linden. So there are two locations. This is the Damon-Tanglewood neighborhood that they would be looking at providing work in during this period of time. And this is the area on Great Plain Ave and Linden. Obviously, this is a highly trafficked area near various amenities. And there's some sort of pros and cons to doing this work off, off-season. So whenever Source approached the town about this, there's, there's obviously no requirement for the town to pursue this, but this is why DPW has considered approving this process. So in the regular season, we saw this last year and they're proposing it again this summer, they're looking at bringing four crews into the town. And that's really all we can support, any more work than that. And it really does have a major impact on traffic. And that's in addition to all the work that DPW is trying to do with our waters, sewer and roads. So we want to try to limit the number of crews that are here during the regular season. And so we think that providing some opportunity to do work off-season, that the, providing the weather is open, will help alleviate some of that, that issue with too many crews in town at the same time. Additionally, the police department has specifically made an opinion on the Great Plain Ave work and that they do have difficulty getting police details during the high-construction season. That's when most of the work is being done in the road. So they actually believe that it would be safer to do this work off-season if it's possible, because they'll be able to get more details for this work versus other neighborhoods where you can potentially do a detour, close one side of the road or, or, you know, provide one detail as opposed to multiple details, which will be required for this project. And so the reason the gas mains are being replaced is because currently the pipe in these areas is in poor condition. There's a mandate for them to be replaced under this replacement program that's been set forth in the state after what happened up in Lawrence and North Andover. They would be increasing the diameter of the pipe, which would help improve the pressure and then also to provide more supply. So those are the reasons why. What we would do though, is make sure that there's special conditions that are on the permit that we wouldn't normally have the ability to leverage in a regular construction season. One is that we're going to require additional outreach to the neighborhood to make sure that they're aware of the project as it happens, using message boards and outreach to the, to the community, especially economic development, because the Great Plain Ave corridor does feed the downtown businesses. We would require that they not stage any materials or equipment on-site during construction. This was the same requirements that we put on Webster Street. We actually found that to be quite successful and that every single trench at the end of the day would be covered with asphalt. So there'd be no plates on the road. And this is really to secure us for any weather events that come up. I know last year, we really didn't have much snow, but we did have a significant number of salting events because of the freeze-thaw cycle that we're in, again, because of some of these climate change patterns. And so we want to make sure that our roads are safe for our plow truck operators in order to operate in an event. They would also be responsible for maintaining snow removal in the area that is in their work site. We would limit the hours of work and we do this also during the school year. It does really condense their day for workload. It's usually between 8:30 and 2:00 in order to facilitate bus traffic and school pickup traffic. And so that's also part of the reason why we would look at providing them the opportunity to come in off-cycle. And then we would also put in enhanced restoration requirement. So neither of these road, or none of these roads that are listed are under the town's moratorium requirements, which means all Eversource is required to do under our existing permit would be to do a permanent trench, which would put them about two feet on either side of the existing trench. And then it would just have them do patching on the surfaces. So you sort of get that striping effect down the road where they're putting the services in on the opposite side. What we would require them is either to do a full overlay or compensate the town for the town to do a full overlay in these two locations. So we think that there's additional added benefit to allowing this work to occur. So again, did not want to move forward with this without bringing this to the board for your consideration, because it is outside of our normal procedures and protocols. But I wanted to sort of present this opportunity and get some feedback from how to move forward.
Thank you for that. I, I do recall that this happened last year, so it's the, the start of a pattern and hopefully it lets you be more efficient with your teams. How do you choose the locations? Are the locations chosen based on leaks that are going on?
Yeah. So I'll try to give you guys a brief synopsis of how it works, right? So it's called the GSET Program. It's a gas system enhancement program. So what our engineering department is, they, they apply a number, it's called the GMRI. It's the gas, gas main rating index. Okay? So it takes into consideration the vintage of the pipe, the material of the pipe, pressure, leak history and town paving requirements. pipe, pressure, leak history, and town paving requirements. So for example, if we have a cast iron main from 1898, it's going to have a very high rating. It's at the top of the list, right? And then as we go down, the cast iron pipe is the oldest, and you have steel, bare steel pipe, and then coated steel pipe, and then recent iterations of plastic, right? So those are all the different type of pipes we have in the ground. Some are more prone to leak. We have a leak history. So in other words, if we have a leak in a pipe, right, we go, we do an instant repair. We track those leaks, and we have a database of how many leaks we might have in a segment of pipe. So it's a weighted average, right? So each, it's not exactly a, you know, it's not really a guessing game. It's a very specific number. And the Department of Public Utilities holds us pretty tight. You know, very little leeway for us to pick other mains, right? So for example, the eight inch steel on Great Plain Ave was installed in 1929, right? It's getting close to 100 years old. It's bare steel, right, and it corrodes, right? It's rusted. And there's been leaks, and we know it's in poor shape. So that's high on the list for us to do. So.
Do we have any cast iron?
No, so.
So those are gone already?
Well, no. So the town of Needham is all intermediate pressure. We call it IP, so intermediate pressure. You guys run at a 60, it's a 60 pound system here. The low pressure systems tend to be more in the inner cities. Some of the smaller towns do have low pressure, but those are really runoff of common regulator pits where we take that 60 pound and we reduce it down to what we call inches of water column. That's about two thirds of a pound or half a pound of pressure. So it's very low pressure. It's not as efficient. You need a much bigger pipe to do the same amount. So the difference in pressure is great. You guys are all in the town of Needham, all on the IP system.
And so if we're looking at replacing bare steel pipes in both of these projects?
Yep.
How, how much bare steel pipe do we have left in other parts of Needham? I'm just curious.
You know, I don't know. I could, I mean, it's something I could look into. I mean, I could probably go to engineering department, would be a little bit of research. There's a lot of coated steel as well, and that's still considered GSEP eligible pipe. Might not be as high on the GMRI rating as the bare steel pipe. But it's a significant amount, you know, and we're targeting that pipe first, right? That's what we need out of our system first.
So would it be reasonable then to consider this indoor work the new normal?
So I think if the weather stay, the weather patterns stay the way that we see them too, I mean, a lot of this is conditional upon the weather staying open through the winter. I would anticipate through this program until probably I would think a energy change would happen before we catch up with the pipe work in town. I mean, it just.
It's hard to tell. So, you know, the, an example, right? So let me just throw this out there is that, you know, there are some times where we work year round with a lot of crews, and there's other towns that are, you know, hold us to a strict moratorium. But what we found is that in certain areas, at least I know in my area, is covers from the Southborough area, 26 towns, all the way out to here, another four, so 30 towns that I cover, the leaks that are happening in the towns where we're more aggressive and we get more work done has the, you could chart a graph, the leaks are way down, right?
That'd be great. I would actually love to see that, in fact.
I mean, we could, yeah, we could put together numbers to show you how, for example, and this is anecdotal, right? But I kind of spent a bunch of my career working out in Worcester area, where in the wintertime, you'd have leaks every single day, because it's a lot of cast iron. And since the start of the GSEP, the program, it's been ramping up every year, the count is, it's down fivefold, tenfold. It's, you know, these are, I don't know exact numbers, but, but it's not like it used to be. So the program that we have in place that to replace all this aging pipe is indeed working.
So can I just ask, when you talk about leaks, are you talking about the gas smell that I smell every time I walk around my neighborhood? Or are you talking about events where houses are exploding?
No.
No, because I haven't heard of many of those. So I mean, it just seems like, what's the level of urgency?
Yeah, that was not due to a leak.
No, I understand that. But it's, but when you, you're talking about a level of urgency that's asked, changing your work schedule. So what is that?
So I'll give an example. So we have leaks. We classify leaks, and I think all the other LDCs do this the same, right? Class one, a class two, and a class three. So if there's a class one leak, there's certain criteria it has to meet. We consider it an immediate threat to life and property. So when that happens, and we realize class one, we mobilize a crew, no one leaves until it's completely fixed and we removed all the gas from the ground or building or whatever needs to be. So those, you know, those are our primary concern. And we have class twos and class threes, class twos. We do not consider it a threat to life or property, but it is a leak that we want to fix it. So we have a certain amount of time to fix it. It goes on a list, it gets done, right? So we schedule those for the future. We don't immediately respond to them and fix them. Class three leaks, you know, that's might be out in the middle of the field. It's not next to anything. It's not, it will never, we don't ever anticipate it will spread and become a problem. We also fix those, but those are, again, farther down on our priority list, right, if we have with our work that we need to do. So, so it's really all leaks in general that are affected by the replacement product. We have less class ones, which are the immediate hazards. We have less class twos that we find, which are the ones that kind of go on, right? It's kind of a nuisance, but it goes on, and they eventually get repaired. They just go, you know, on a list. And then the class threes, which are even, you know, less.
So I will say, since our assistant director Shane Mark started with us a year ago, we've had a pretty aggressive meeting schedule with Eversource. We meet every month. Sort of sometimes it's a two steps forward, one step backward type situation, but we're definitely increasing our communication. We have a list now of all the leaks that are listed in town, and we're looking at getting a periodic update of that. So that way, we know, like, we don't want to pave a road if we know that they may come in and try to do an emergency repair or on that particular area. So we are working much better to coordinate. We're not quite there yet. We're kind of probably a year away from really having a smoother process of them having a better understanding of our five-year capital planning and a better understanding of the capital planning from Eversource's perspective. And then one of the things we are evaluating right now is our street opening permits. To be honest, they just weren't written, because we weren't assuming large main work in town. We sort of assumed that that infrastructure had been built out. So now that that's occurring, we're looking at trying to index the road improvement to the condition of the road as opposed to the number of years since the road was paved. Because sometimes we have roads that are 10 years old, and they haven't been cut into, and they really aren't problematic, and they're rated fairly high. And when you do cut into a road at that level of, the level of length that you are when you're doing main work, it can deteriorate the road faster. So we're looking at just trying to catch up the process. And then I think part of this winter work is part of that as well.
I'm intrigued by it. I mean, right, why not open the road? Why not try to do the work? But suppose we do get a snowstorm that's like 18 inches, and another one the next week, you shut down for two or three weeks. I mean, I got it, but what happens to service? Does anything?
Nothing gets interrupted.
Okay.
Now, we, a couple of things. So in the wintertime, we don't do service work.
Okay.
Because we don't want to make cross trenches. We don't want to dig in people's lawns in the wintertime.
Okay.
So all we do in the wintertime is just a lateral trench down the road. It's just the main install.
Okay.
And we'll gas those in, and we don't do the service work. But the, the existing infrastructure remains live and in place, and everyone's service remains in place until all the services are, everybody's tied over to the new.
Okay. Now, then you just sit tight until the snow.
Yeah, nothing, they don't even, nothing will be affected. Yeah, at all.
I like the no plates.
Right, the no plates are good. I'm curious how you do that. This is, I don't want to hold things up, but I'm just curious. Like, how do you, how do you, how do you patch it and then get back into it the next day?
It's a lot more work for us. You know, we backfill it. So in the wintertime, we bring in fresh gravel. We don't really don't, we don't use the same gravel. Scoop it up, we haul it away.
Scoop it out the next day?
Yeah, we haul it, we put it in trucks, they haul it away. We bring in fresh gravel, and then we backfill it, and then we pave it. You know, so say in a day, we put in 60 feet, 80 feet of pipe. The next day, we're only digging the end of that pipe to connect it, the last five feet. So, so we're installing 80 feet, but the last five, we dig out the following day again to install the next run. Yeah. So as opposed to, you know, putting a plate on it and then just leaving that pipe exposed. So it's much easier for the crew the next day to come in and, you know, do their connection and then move on. So we do a little bit more work.
Great. I think that it worked really well on Webster, I have to say, since I drive down that all the time.
No, that was great. That was a pretty good sized project. And the early start helped us kind of finish right around the school time. Otherwise, it would have dragged on much, much later into that school season, considering the location of it.
Any questions? Yeah, just have one last question. So if you, if you did these two projects in the winter, and then you would have four in the summer, right? And I understand the selection of Great Plain to get the details. Why the other one were winter versus summer?
It's just that the length of the pipe install, it's 4,000 feet of pipe, right, which is almost a mile of pipe. And the amount of services and the amount of homes in the area, it's just, just the manpower, you know, it's, we're looking at bringing a crew there for, you know, six to eight, nine months.
I see. So you wouldn't have enough time during the normal.
No, if we started in April, we'd be trying to, it'd be this time of year, and we'd be trying to hustle to finish it. Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any concerns that they would want to say no? Otherwise, I mean, my sense is we're supportive of continuing this work and continuing to make headway on this. And we absolutely appreciate coordination with the town.
We're doing our best. We'll get better and better as time goes on.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. All right. The next item we have is to delay implementation of the community stormwater mitigation assessments. Dave Davidson is going to come talk to us about what is going on with our water bills and what's happening and what that means relative to the stormwater fund. And thank you for keeping us surprised of where we are now.
Madam Chair, the first item is the stormwater mitigation fee, which the board voted to implement starting January 1. The board voted that back in the spring of 2023. The reason we're asking the board to vote to delay the implementation is from a practical reason. The intent was to build this fee, it's a new fee, it's being implemented, to raise money to deal with capital infrastructure associated with NIPDs. And in order to implement that through the water and sewer system, it is going to be a time-consuming process in terms of ensuring that we identify the appropriate, as a reminder to the board, the fee is based upon the impervious, amount of impervious coverage on a property that's going to determine the fee. And there's a lot of manual detailed work in order to ensure that we're getting the correct fee with each property. There is reliance on the GIS, but the GIS is just helping us visualize. GIS does nothing automated in order to move information into another billing system. So it's going to be a manual process. As the board is aware, we're implementing a new billing, water and billing collection system, because the old system is no longer operable. It's stated, as I said, the easiest way to describe is the old system is green screen. And we're moving from green screen to something that is much more user friendly. And I have to say, with the turnover in staff, staff that has actually familiar with color graphics and stuff, but not green screen, it's very helpful. This implementation has been difficult, and it's been difficult because it's, it's one, with anything, it's a change. It's a new system. There's implementation trying to deal with the complexity of the legal requirements with water and sewer billing, and like a private concern, which can do whatever it wants unless the law says it can't do it. For us, we must prescribe and follow the law. Our old system was failing, and this process was accelerated in order to move from the old system to the new system. There's been implementation difficulties. There's been logic issues, the logic in terms of moving information from the old system, putting into the new systems, building the tables. So we haven't been billing. Secondly, we have to also post the payments that have been coming in over the last three months. Now, the checks are being cashed, and, but there is, the billing files are not ready to enter the payments. So we need to ensure that everything's posted. We need to ensure that the meter reading system, which is also changing, because we were using old technology, because the system that we had was old, and the company that provides the meter reading system needed us to upgrade as well. So there is, that's introducing another application where there's going to be interface and working together. We have to make sure that that is working properly, so the reads come in correctly into the billing system. And the billing system, when we generate the bills, that is then created into a file that's shipped off to yet another entity that takes that data, to create the bills, to print the bills, to put them in the envelopes and mail them to the folks. And then when people pay their bills, they're either mailing in a check with the stub that is going to a lockbox provider, to a company, yet another entity, yet another application, another company, which is changing their systems, which is outside of the control of the town of Needham. Or folks may use online payment systems. There's one entity we call Invoice Cloud, where people can pay their bills. There's others that people pay their bill through their online banking and system. While those also involve other third-party applications, which also are upgrading and needing to communicate with, with our new billing system. For all those reasons, the implementation, and we're now coming up on about 90 days since we last billed in water and sewer. Realistically, it's in January before we expect billing would happening. So January 1 would not work for the implementation of the, of the new fee that many folks, although there's a public hearing, and although there's been publicity about it, it's safe to say, most people are unaware of this. So they're going to receive a bill. It's going to look different. It's going to be new. That's all because of the new application that we're using, the new format. And we need for folks to be accustomed to seeing new billing, seeing how that works. Then the introduction of the stormwater fee would make sense. I just think from a public relations standpoint, it's better to delay the implementation. I think from an operational standpoint, it makes sense. And also from a people aspect, the crew at DPW and in the Treasury's office, they're just overwhelmed with the backlog of work in implementing the software. And with that, take any questions members may have.
Questions?
Sounds like there's nothing to it. Oh, my God. That's overwhelming. So I'm fine with, if they need to time, that's fine. My own concern is if people are getting the bills, are they going to get whacked with a giant number sometime when this comes out, or?
The bill, I'll make sure I understand. Is the question about the stormwater fee?
No, not about the fee either.
No, the bills, it's the rate structure that's in effect. It would be the bill that, if the bill went out in October, you're going to see that bill, hopefully at the beginning of January, it's the same bill. They're going to have the same 30 days to pay for it. And then we'll slowly be catching up to get everybody current.
Okay, okay.
So people will see catch-up payments, so, or the billing will happen more frequently or whatever to get back.
But it's not going to be two bills at one time.
Correct.
Not like once, is what you're saying. So basically, it's spread out, but they're going to have to catch up.
Yes, it's going to be a shorter period of time. But the more important thing, we're not going to combine two readings together, which could artificially force a homeowner's consumption into a higher step rate.
Which we don't want.
Which we do not want. And that's why we're breaking out the way we are.
Okay. And then the stormwater fee, that passed a meeting about consent. Everyone was all for it. No questions. So it passed. But you're right, if we throw that out now and you're not ready to go, that would cause a lot of confusion. It doesn't have to be that complicated. When would you be ready? I mean, we look at a possible motion, January 1, from January 1 to?
To April 1.
April 1.
Can I just, I just want to make one clarification. I mean, thank you for that excellent explanation. But actually, this has very little to do with that. I just want to note that But actually, this has very little to do with that. I just want to note that one of the people who came to give a public comment earlier today noted that this delay of assessment of stormwater was on our agenda today. And I just wanted to make sure that she and everyone else understood that we are not delaying assessing stormwater problems. We're delaying making you pay assessed fees based on our stormwater charge, which doesn't, you know, we're trying to make things easier for folks in the town and the town staff. This has nothing to do with assessing flooding risk, or the hydrology map, or any of the plans that the town has made to deal with any flooding issues that might occur. This is an assessed payment, not an assessment of stormwater. And also that the fees that would accumulate are not taken away from assessing flooding issues because they're only, they're dedicated to our NIPDs program and so are for something else entirely. So because she made that point of worrying that we were pushing something off, I just want to make it clear that we are not doing that. That this has nothing really to do with flooding. This is for our stormwater program that's federally mandated.
And Chair, I could add, that's an excellent point. This fee is for stormwater quality, which is treating the water quality. And stormwater capacity is really what we were talking about in terms of flooding.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ari.
And Madam Chair, although it's next?
So we do need a vote.
You will need a vote on that. I would just add, although it's the next item, to the point of the concern about drainage issues and capacity in the capital improvement plan, we are recommending, even though there is a very expensive project that has impacted Public Works Infrastructure Program, we are funding the items dealing with drainage and the study. They are both being recommended. Again, to the point that the citizen was raising concerns.
Thank you. So before we leave this item, we do need a vote, and I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the delay with the start date for the implementation of the community stormwater mitigation assessments from January 1st, 2024 to April, April 1st, 2024.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you, Dave. And you're staying right where you are.
Katie's.
Katie's going to join. Our next item is the capital improvement plan, which we had a first pass of at our last meeting.
Second pass, that you listened?
Our second pass, okay. I was going to say, it's come in rapid succession. I was going between first, second, third at this point. But that is an evolution that we go through every year. And so this is a version that's up to us for approval. So who's starting?
I'll start it off. So as we do every year, the last meeting in November and the two meetings in December, we go through the capital improvement plan. And I wanted to highlight, and if I miss any, Dave and Katie will point them out, the changes that we made since your last meeting. We had told you that we were making some hard choices and we were really struggling to think of ways to make many of the, more of the projects work. And I think we've been able to do that. The most notable of that is on the first page, which is the high school tennis court improvements. We're proposing to fund a portion of the tennis court improvements from the CPA, and then a portion from the athletic facility stabilization fund. And actually, some alternative funding sources, including a warrant article that can be reallocated in the overlay surplus. This is a proposal that Dave came up with to use the athletic facility stabilization fund. And I think it makes a lot of sense in that these are courts that are used by the students, but also the public. And so this is a really unique way to think about that. And it's also, we were able to determine that 1.4 million from the CPA is possible if the CPC is willing to support it and fund the requested amount from the Needham Housing Authority for its projects. So that wasn't known to us at your last meeting. So that, this is a project that the town and the town meeting have approved the design for, and stopping it was really, was really heart-wrenching. So I thank Dave for his brilliant idea. We, as Dave mentioned, we are, we had been recommending that we use alternative funding for the Public Works Infrastructure Program, but these two items related to stormwater are not fundable through Chapter 90. So we really wanted to make sure that they were there. That did result in our moving many of the vehicles into Tier 2, hopefully, that they are something that we can find a way to fund by the time the town meeting comes around. But Public Works and we agreed that the investment in the stormwater work at Alderbrook and the hydrology study really needed to come first. Another change on the Public Works Facilities Improvement, this now includes partial funding from award articles and a contribution from the Enterprise Fund. So it's a lower borrowing amount for that item, which is on page two.
Which item, Kate?
I'm looking at last week's. It's the DPW facilities design for the change to the Jack Cogswell Building. Is it at the top of page two?
It's actually page three of the.
I was going to say that I've been very confused, trying to figure out where you are.
I'm using the 25. Sorry about that.
There were Phase 1 design.
Thank you.
1,600,000.
Right.
Tuned in.
Just terribly lost.
Yeah, no. So she's in the capital budget. She's not in the five-year plan. That's why we're so confused. We're in completely different documents.
You do have the capital budget document?
Yes.
I don't know. We have the five-year plan.
This is five-year plan.
We don't have the capital budget document, as far as I know.
It's in our packet.
It's in the packet.
Sorry about the confusion.
But we were looking at the handout, thinking it was here, which was very confusing.
Yes, we all rely on different documents. Dave looks at the five-year and I look at the easier one.
Okay.
With the bigger font.
Can I just ask one question before you continue?
Of course.
When, when we're looking at this, the headers here, and it says that we're using cash, is that existing cash?
Free cash.
Like, does that include the not-yet-certified free cash?
It is the not-yet-certified free cash.
It is the not-yet-certified free cash. Thank you.
There is currently no free cash.
Yeah, so, okay, that's.
We fully expect the free cash to be certified.
There's an assumption about how much will be certified. So, thank you.
That is correct. And if it is not certified, then this would all disappear.
Hey, do you want to talk briefly about how you estimate the free cash available for capital?
Free cash, I look at a combination of local receipts that come in over the budget estimates and focus on projects that are closed out that are less than $25,000 in that returns to fund balance, as well as budget returns. We do have a practice that, particularly during a hard time, that free cash, a certain amount of free cash may be used for the operating budget. But we cap that at 2% of the prior year's operating budget, or the actual turnback, whichever is lower. The reason for that is so that you're not using a highly, a highly sensitive revenue source to fund recurring expenses. So, and effectively, free cash is considered one-time funds, although it happens every year. You're going to have great volatility in the amount. So you, we do not want to rely upon free cash to a certain amount.
Have I missed anything in the general fund that was a major change from the prior?
Did you talk about the theater lighting? We talked about that the last meeting. They, we are recommending the 114,630 that the superintendent asked as the code compliant. And we expect to continue to look at what we can fund in future years for the Newman and the High School, and then the Pollard may be part of the conversation about the Pollards.
Okay, so this 114,000, that's for all three of the theaters? Or does it leave out Pollard? Because?
It's for whatever the code compliance issues were that were identified.
I don't believe it leaves out Pollard because the new Pollard wouldn't open until the 2030, 2031. So, I don't have the breakdown in my hands, but I can certainly get it.
No, that's all right. I'm just wondering how the MSBA stuff affects the planning for that, that's all.
That will all be a part of the feasibility conversation. So it's an unknown at this point.
Well, and I do think it means we won't be doing upgrades in that theater.
Yeah.
Until we understand fully what that looks like.
The other significant changes is the sewer main replacement. The total request is $33.6 million. We were looking at 13,600,000 from debt. We are, we were able to reduce that somewhat. We have other projects that have closed out, those monies can be redirected, and a portion of estimated retained earnings will be used, so that we reduce the amount to be borrowed down to $12 billion.
That's pretty impressive.
And one other change is the water service connections. We were originally anticipating borrowing for those, but a combination of fund balances from old water projects that have closed out, which we were reserving for other water projects in the future. But they're projects that have been pushed out again. And at this time, it just, holding the balances any longer doesn't make sense. So, and they are appropriately to be used for something such as water service. And then there was a residual balance of $377,000, which would be from estimated water retained earnings. But those are the changes from that which was discussed by the town manager at the last meeting.
And Clatston Field has boomed up to 3.6 million. That's debt, right?
Right. Although that, the number hasn't changed since. But yes, it is, it's an environmental remediation project with a field as well.
I appreciate the creativity in finding, finding the dollars to further these projects. So thank you.
Super impressive.
I know the board received correspondence from the library trustees about the young adult area and that we had recommended.
That's in here.
Right. About that last meeting. Yep.
Yeah. Any other questions? I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan for transmittal to the Finance Committee.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another piece of the budget moves forward. Onto the next, we will now start.
The operating budgets?
Rapid succession on the operating.
About a month from now? Exactly a month?
Probably.
Thank you.
Do you want to join us, Karis, for the stormwater?
So while Karis is making her way up here, the next item is the stormwater working group, the Stormwater Bailiff Working Group. But we talked about this at the last meeting. Our recommendation is that we appoint a working group to guide the process of the update. There are technical updates that are required under our NIPDs permit, but we also believe that there are some improvements to water, stormwater capacity that could be added. And so we recommend that a working group come together and think about those. And we do recommend that we have a resident at large, probably somebody who has been impacted, who has strong feelings.
Agreed.
At the same, in this item, I asked Karis if she could give you a brief update on what happened yesterday, and whether you have any questions for her that she can go back and answer. And our water sewer superintendent is here, too.
Great. Thank you, Karis. Thank you. So yesterday, the weather event that we received was very different than the weather event that came in on August 8th. So we had an event that was both highly wind-driven and also high volumes of rain, but over a longer period of time. Because of the time of the year, we had, and the wind speeds that we had, we had a lot of debris that ended up collecting in the roads. And that debris, through water that moved through the roads, ended up collecting on our catch basins. Just for some context, we have 4,200 catch basins in town. So we have about 24 staff in water and sewer, as well as we have staff in highway and Parks and Forestry that were working the event. Parks and Forestry is obviously dedicated towards tree issues, and highway was in support of road closures. And our water staff was primarily working at clearing catch basins consistently through the event, in areas that we know to be trouble spots, which are typically low areas. Those low areas saw surcharging during the August 8th event. We are not aware of surcharging that happened during this event. This was more because of those catch basins being plugged up and closed. The water couldn't penetrate into the catch basins, not the water coming up from the catch basins.
Can you just talk a little bit about what surcharging is?
Sure. So one of the concerns that came out of that, because of the volume of rain we had on August 8th, the storm pipes that we had could not contain all the water that was being poured into it. So water at a low point was coming up out of the catch basin, versus at this particular event where water was collecting on the road and not going into the catch basin. So that would be the main difference between the two events. The neighborhoods that were hit were likely, they were all kind of the similar neighborhoods, because those neighborhoods are at low points. That's where water would surcharge from a system because it's a low point. And it's also where water would collect on the surface when the catch basins are clogged. So we had residents calling and complaining that they would clean a catch basin and they would get plugged up quite quickly. It's the same with us. It doesn't matter how big or small the catch basin is, it's still going to get plugged up with debris. It's sort of just the nature of wind and water in these types of events. So that was what we spent the majority of that day doing. We don't believe the flooding was extensive. I'll just sort of give one anecdotal. The main issue we had on August 8th was our sewer systems at or above capacity. And that was because of people who are, who were incorrectly moving water from their sump pumps into the town's sewer system, which is one of the items that is in our capital plan for next year to try to address. So they were pumping either by putting their, their sump pumps directly, like into a tub, a slop sink, something like that, or they had a connection that preexisted that illegally connected into our sewer directly. They were filling up our sewer system and then causing concerns about the capacity there. We didn't run into that problem, which would indicate that we didn't have as much flooding as we did on August 8th, because we would have seen that same type of infiltration. We have received nine inches of rain in December. I think one of our staff, when we were talking about this yesterday, said, well, you should give the historic number, inches of rain that we have in December. And my answer back was, it's December. So we don't typically get high volumes of rain, we get snow. Snow does not percolate into the ground. It does not collect in storm drains. It's just a completely different entity. So while that, if that weather had been snow, at that volume of moisture, it would have also been problematic. We probably would have seen several feet of snow. Just a different issue when it comes to something like flooding. It would indicate that this created a regional issue for trees and for, for stormwater, not just localized to Needham. We're still dealing with, the town dealt with all the tree issues. We've been driving all of the, our regular snowplow routes today, doing debris removal. And we've activated our street sweeping, so that way we can remove that additional debris that came in after the leaves fell, which is when we typically do our street sweeping in the fall, to clear out the road. And we're actually engaging an outside company that provides assistance twice a year, so we can do an entire street sweeping of the town, so those catch basins won't continue to get clogged. Just wanted to provide a brief update of what DPW has done since the August 8 storms. And I know we've had a few people here who've accompanied us on a few of those meetings. I think the conversations have been pretty much the same across the board. We have been very clear and transparent that the issues with, that people experienced during that event are not easy or simple to remedy. They're very complicated. Most of them are more, say, inland. It's kind of an interesting expression when it comes to Needham, but more inland and further away from Charles River. So in order to remedy some of those issues, you have to follow from the Charles River into the center of town. You can't just make a pipe bigger in the center of town. It's not actually going to go anywhere. You need to find a place for it to have an outlet in the Charles River. Although I will indicate right now, the Charles River is basically a capacity. If you drive by it, you'll see it's at a very high level, and there isn't a lot of space for any water to move into the river. Staff has been working to investigate insurance claims and FOIA requests. They've been very time-consuming for our staff, and I don't know if they're really going to yield much positive results for residents as far as those insurance claims and FOIA requests. We have engaged in neighborhood meetings, which has been both a proactive approach on the town's part when it came to neighborhoods that were more densely impacted. And then we did it by invitation. And then we did it by invitation to those individuals who had reached out to us and indicated they were flooded. We have met with forty-one households, so that's not forty-one individuals. There's many times we've had multiple individuals from each household. And we have had sixteen onsite meetings. That is in addition to all the times that DPW staff, engineering staff, water staff has been out onsite to meet with residents. This is sort of that larger meeting. So when you think about it, that's quite a lot of staff time that's been devoted to this. We've brought out multidisciplinary individuals. So we've had town hall there. We've had board members. We've had the building department, engineering department and water department, and then general DPW. And the general sentiments that we've received, I think they've been really positive conversations with all the neighbors, understanding that they're frustrated. I really can't provide them the immediate relief. The themes that we heard were that there was a similar event in 2013 and people who may have had my role and, and in the leadership of DPW may have made promises that we could remedy all this in ten years. And I think what I've been really clear and explicit about is that I don't know if we can remedy this all in ten years. But what the large amount of frustration we've heard is the lack of transparency and the communication that went out to the residents after those meetings. So they were sort of told, well, we'll put it in the capital plan. It'll definitely get fixed. And then didn't really hear anything. So sometimes the neighborhoods didn't realize we actually had done some work upstream of them because it wasn't in their neighborhood. They don't really know how their systems connect. And we have not done a very good job in public works of communicating that out of the work that we have done. Nor have we done a good job of communicating the increase in cost of doing flooding work, what we had initially assumed when that capital plan was built out in 2013. The cost of doing stormwater work has become much more expensive than what we had estimated at that time. So what we've committed is we are working right now on a portal dashboard for residents that will be on the town's website that will provide some background. It should provide action items that we've taken over the last ten years to try to improve our stormwater system. It will include areas that we have identified as part of these conversations for targeting of, of research. And then it'll have all the information about our five-year capital plan. And then this is where some of the stormwater master plan information will also live. So what we're trying to commit to is assuming as transparent as possible about what we can, can't do and what the future looks like. We've also made recommendations for hardening of properties, both on the town side and on the residential side. So there's been opportunities for it to lift curb, create a better slope so that way it would delay water getting onto property. And then also made recommendations for private owners to harden their property as well, including having redundant sump pumps. Some of them had some design elements that would have made it more prone to flooding. So trying to make recommendations on how they could harden their property. For example, one house we looked at had seven stairs that went down to a walkout, oh, walkout basement. Wasn't walkout. It was, you know, it's a bulk below ground basement, but some developer tried to make it look like a walkout basement. What ended up happening was that put six feet of water pressure on that door as opposed to one foot of water pressure on the door if it had been a grade. So what that resident actually had already engaged somebody to do before we met with them, and it would have been our recommendation, they're removing it, they're putting in a bulkhead and they're going to raise up a concrete lip a foot over the, the ground level. So that way the water will have a much harder time getting in their property. So we kind of see that as a joint effort. We put in the stormwater capacity master plan for funding this year. This plan will take about a year in order to complete. So I just want to set clear expectations. And then it will result, we hope, in large and small scale projects. But they may take up to decades to complete. And so we have to really, I think, make it clear that getting all the way into the low points in the center of the town is going to take a longer time than remedying some of the issues that are closer to the Charles River. So we already had Alderbrook on our plan. It was in our five-year capital plan last year as well. And we decided to continue moving that forward because Alderbrook is where it starts. And if you're working your way backwards, that's the first place where it would make sense to begin to make improvements. So that way, when we make improvements further down the, the line, it will, it will help us to speed that by not delaying that for the storm.
Can you remind people where Alderbrook is?
Alderbrook is, the, the main part of it that you'll see is what comes out of four seventy at Dedham Avenue, the DPW building. It, it goes down the road behind George Jaggett and into the town. But it's one of the entry points and one of the areas that we had serious surcharging in the August eighth storm. The other one was just that we're going to do the stormwater bylaw review and look at it from both a quality and capacity standpoint when we look at new development. When I've gone and talked to other people and seen sort of national presentations on this, stormwater is not a Needham problem. It is a national problem. We are just a little bit limited because we're so densely developed. We don't have a lot of space to put stormwater compared to other parts of the country, the Midwest, the Southwest, where they have more space to sort of deal with water storage on a temporary basis while you're dealing with these pretty intense snowstorm, uh, rainstorm events.
Questions for Karis?
Oh, yes. Thank you. It was great.
I've heard a lot of that. I've been to a lot of the meetings.
I think you can give it at this point.
I feel well versed. Time to get in the weeds a little bit, but again, the weeds. When Todd talks about Kerry Road and one manhole is, or drain, catch basin is filling up and the others are not, what would that be attributed to? Is it plugged or is it?
So we'll have to go out and take a look. My, this is a guess. I haven't been out there, is that it's the low point?
Yep.
And it was getting constantly filled because all the materials were moving down to the low point. He was clearing it off.
Right.
And five minutes later, the debris that was on the street was coming back to it. So that's my assumption during that event, but that's not a neighborhood that we've gone to. So I think we'll be adding that to the list of reaching out and seeing if we can do an onsite conversation. Because that's one of the things we've been doing at the very beginning of each of these meetings, is we've sort of done a play-by-play of what the day looked like during those, the last event, the August eighth event. Because that helps tell us where the issues might be in that particular neighborhood.
And Mark Tree in Oak, what was, is that just a standing issue?
So, um. Mike and I were talking about this earlier. But my understanding is the vector that we're, the vectoring that we're doing in that particular area is related to the sewage, not the stormwater?
Correct. So at that one intersection, Henderson and Oak, there's multiple manholes there. One is for sanitary sewer. The other is for storm drainage.
Okay.
So at that location, we have the sanitary sewer system that we've had past SSOs, which are sewer service overflows. The sewer will actually come up out of one of the manholes.
That's bad.
Yes. That goes right to DEP and EPA when that happens.
Okay.
So those manholes will surcharge. They don't necessarily overflow, but they can, we have in the past, I know, pump from one to the other, the sewer to the drain, and we report that when we do it.
Okay.
It's, it's not something I like to do. But sometimes you have to do it because it's, it's going to go into the drain anyhow. Because it's going to go to the nearest catch basin and then just go right into the drainage system. This is kind of a controlled overflow. You time it. You do what you need to do. And then you stop as soon as you know, or you can get to Lincoln Street down by Briwood Healthcare. We have a relief drain sewer down there. And as soon as we can get to that point, we pump from there into the sewer. So it's sewer going into sewer, which is fine. And then that brings Oak Street leveled down.
Okay.
Oak Street sewer leveled down.
Oak Street sewer leveled down.
So did that happen yesterday?
No, we didn't have a surcharge of any sewage at all coming out of the manhole. No SSOs, nothing like that. We monitored that all day yesterday.
So the issue yesterday was stormwater related there then?
Yeah, but some.
Stormwater related is the elevation of that area. Because that water finds its own level. And it doesn't have a lot of room to come up because it sits in that lower elevation or that bowl. And again, I saw some of what happened there yesterday. And I went out and I cleared off a catch basin that was right in the corner of Mark Tree at Oak that was filled with leaves and other things. And so what happens, once that, once those catch basins start to fill with leaves, they start to cascade that way. So the water won't go in them. It goes to the next one. That one fills with leaves, goes to the next one. That one fills, now the water's just rolling down the street. And then the first street that's going to be lower elevation wise, the water goes right down there. And then that storm drain gets clogged and they're getting all the water from further up. So it became a cascading effect. And that happened throughout town. That happened throughout town. It happened on Harris.
Yep.
Down onto Prince.
Yeah.
Down onto, so the whole thing was just.
Okay.
We were chasing our tails until we could get it out. And my guys are out there raking them off, trying to get the stuff off. And sometimes you could be there fifteen minutes, depending on the size of the puddle. Sometimes you're there for nearly an hour.
Okay. Did you do any pumping yesterday?
No.
Okay. Thank you for everything you did though. That was great. That was a lot of work.
Yes. We had eight people on last night till probably about eight o'clock.
I think the conversation about the sewer versus the stormwater is something we can try to do more on because I don't, I don't, it's hard to know the difference if you're not paying, you know, not in the business.
It is. The terms get mixed up sometimes.
Well, and I, I think there's an assumption, right? So that we had an incident in August that was related to volume of rain in a very short period of time. This issue, the cascading challenge, is a different one. It doesn't say that there's necessarily a capacity issue yesterday. It just couldn't even get to where there was capacity.
So that's what we found when we, I think to Mike's point, when we did open up the grate, the water would come down. And as long as it didn't fill back up in with debris, it would, it would drain quite quickly.
And there was a lot of debris that came down.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
Everywhere. I know. In the morning, it was a total mess. So, yeah. So makes that a challenge. What was our rain count yesterday? Was there an official?
Four and a quarter.
I was going to say, I had four and a quarter. So that, that.
Steve Kusick down at the water treatment plant, he monitors rainfall daily.
Yeah.
So, and then, and then reports that. So.
And we've had a lot of rain this month.
So nine inches, he told me when he came in the office today.
Nine inches prior to the four?
No, it was, it was the previous week, the previous week, right? And then this week. So it's over, across ten days, it's been that nine inches. So it's a lot of rain.
We dodged the wind in that previous event and the rain was spread out enough that we didn't have the debris that then clogged the catch basin. So our system was able to keep up. We didn't really have any complaints regarding flooding. This particular event ended up being more severe.
Yeah, but we were having seventy, sixty mile an hour wind gusts too. So, yeah. You do.
Question. Thank you first for all the hard work. I can't even imagine what you guys have been through.
We're not finished. Yeah, to be clear, we're not finished. So continue to say thank you.
And the great explanations. And one of the things that I've heard around is sort of this idea of, well, if we knew a little bit ahead, there's preparations we could do. And, and I remember hearing with the, the great snow presentation about the weather, you know, the weather reports that we get that are maybe better than the average. But can you talk about that? Because I don't, you know, are there things you can do ahead? How much notice do you get? Does it matter that you get that notice? Or is it, you're still in the same situation whether you had notice or not?
So I will indicate, and again, it's social media, so if you're paying attention, it's there, if not, not. But we did post out at the beginning before the event about clearing catch basins and tree protocols because we did know there was an event coming. What I will say, we've talked to our reporters and yesterday through our emergency management calls, that this was misforecast. We did anticipate that the majority of the winds, at least, were going to go, and the majority of the rain was actually going to go to the west of us. We were supposed to be in the one to two inch range and in a lower range for wind, similar to what we were a week ago, which was fine. That did not end up amounting. We ended up getting significant winds in the early morning that did a lot of tree damage. The high saturation of the trees right now is making them more prone to falling, which is what we found when it came to the power outages we had in town. I will say, when I spoke with Ed Olson, who again, has been working pretty much nonstop for the past two days in support of opening up roads and then also helping out with Eversource, that only one of the trees that fell on the public way was a town tree. So almost all the trees that fell during that event were actually private trees. So I do encourage people to have tree experts come to your house, look at your trees, make sure that they're being managed, maintained, so they can stay safe. And so we do get weather forecasts. They are better than what you get as a regular person. They're not great. So I will give a perfect example. When we had a conversation with the school about the, what ended up being the shelter in place for the additional hour. And we were having concerns about streets being closed, trees continuing to fall down and live wires that were around. And one of the concerns we had is we had a forecasted increased band of gusting that was supposed to come between one and two o'clock. We did not get an increased band of gusting between one and two o'clock. Now, it was still the right call because we still didn't have some of the live wire issues, particularly.
I just want to say, we got it in Wellesley, but keep going.
So but that's right.
Yeah.
So it is very hard for us to micro-communicate the impact that it's going to have on every individual resident, any more than any weather forecaster could. So we do try to, we have some pretty good infographics, I think, that are out there about catch basins, about tree issues. So we do try to get those out in advance of an event. But it is, you know, these were items that were forecasted. I know I look at, you know, our, you know, regular forecasts as well as weather.com. And weather.com had big red banners up across it that said that there was severe weather coming. I think they're looking for some assurance that there definitely is severe weather coming because sometimes they say it will and sometimes it won't. And we're just as much in the dark as they are about whether or not that will happen.
It's so interesting to me that you say that because I was driving home around two fifteen and I was stuck on Linden Street in Wellesley. And at the time I said, they let their kids out of school. I'm glad we didn't need them because nobody is moving here. The entire street is flooded. All the buses are sitting. It was a mess, just an absolute mess. So. So I was grateful, but we had that additional wind that came through right before that. So. Wild and crazy day. Heidi.
I want to say thank you. I think that your point about trying to be more transparent and sort of just, to my mind, the number of times that you've come here, the number of times that you've provided sort of very fluid, straight talk about what our situation is and what we can really expect, fairly expect from the town. I think it's very helpful. I, I think that it's probably, I, I empathize because I think it's very hard to be the person responsible when people are hurting and you have all kinds of empathy for them, but can't really individually fix any of those problems. So I appreciate that. And I know that that must be very difficult, not only for you, but for everyone in the department. I did have a couple of questions. I think someone earlier tonight made a point about the RAVE emergency communication system. I think that would be totally reasonable. Yeah, it's a text alert that the town does. We have a system. I didn't get one. I mean, I know that, I know, I saw it on social media, but I can, I can appreciate that if people weren't looking, then they don't see it. But usually people.
Can I just respond to that? That, one of the issues we have that is that it takes a very long time. And so on August eighth, by the time it had gone out, it would have stopped raining. So.
Sure.
We do, we do, we had an emergency EOC meeting at twelve and at two, and we talked about it. But, so we do talk about it. It's, it's utility sometimes, although the texting, we, we are exploring whether we can get that out faster or something.
Yeah. Well, yeah, or like a reverse nine one one or some, I mean, it just seems like.
People to sign up.
There would be something. Yes. Yes. If you're listening, go and sign up on, on the town website. I also wonder if we could maybe get the forestry department involved in some kind of, you know, campaign to have people change their front yards or their backyards into the swales that Alan Fine was talking about it. That's a really well-acknowledged tactic. And it seems like, I mean, I know that the forestry department, you know, does an annual giving away of trees, maybe, maybe hostess, or, or something, you know, that's appropriate for that kind of thing. And then lastly, and this is a total goofy question, but there are many people who live in wooded areas who, who would put some sort of, you know, because I think this, this issue, especially in the winter, happens with people getting leaves in their gutters. We all know that we have to take the leaves out of the gutters or ice dams will form. And so there are products that, you know, could maybe cover your gutters with a screen so that the leaves fall off. I'm wondering, particularly for these low-lying areas where the catch basin and debris is an issue, is there something we could?
No, I was actually.
Like a bubble?
Yeah. I was joking to someone about like lasers to.
Like a screen. A screen where like.
So the issue is.
Comes up higher.
Plug up. So you have to drive over them, right? So they're in the curb. We talk about bike lanes. We talk about using the right of way. So they're oftentimes in the right of way where either a vehicle could go over them or a bike could go over them.
Yeah.
In fact, the type of grate that we use, a long time ago, would have seen just like long bars in the grate, which would have been more open, making it less prone to be.
Bad for bikers.
Very bad for bikers. So that's one of the reasons we use them. But we will certainly reach out, like find out if there's ever a product. find out if there's ever a product. I know we've talked about like there's black ice sensors. So they're, you know, they're developing products if there's something there. But no, we can't think of anything. We were having this conversation.
They make landscape style beehive grates that come up, but they're always in landscape areas because you can't put them in the street.
Yeah.
So when they are, they're a dome and they're open and things can build up around them. The water could still eventually get in them. But, but in the street, you can't put anything any finer than what we have. Some people have said, well, can we have larger holes in the, in the catch basin grate? So more will go in. I said, well, what that does, that creates another problem because the more you put in it, the next thing you know, the pipe's going to get plugged. Now nothing's going to move through the line. So you have to be able to limit what's going in debris wise.
So really, we need public participation, clear hydrant, clear catch basin.
And.
People need to.
And I want to thank a lot of people because I went around and people were out there in their boots and raking, raking the stuff off. And they go, when does it stop? I go, it doesn't stop until the water stops flowing and the debris stops coming down.
Yeah.
And again, nothing like the August 8th storm.
No, no, but, but worth, worth the effort if it saves your basement. Yeah.
And Heidi mentioned the idea about hostas, right? Which is another whole thing. But I'm wondering if there's some hints that maybe Eddie and the team could put together about things people should look at at their trees that are a sign that they need to call a tree specialist. It feels to me like there's maybe a set of messaging around that. You, you know, your trees are great, but they are not completely independent.
Rain gardens are a BMP in some ways, right? So we can.
Rain gardens are a BMP, yeah.
Need some critical mass.
Yeah. So, all good things. Marcus.
Yes. And I think it goes, everyone's already said it, just the gratitude for what you've done, what you're doing, what you will continue to do, to do your best and what we can to make sure that this town is flowing in the right direction and making sure that the peoples that were listening and that we are acting upon what we're hearing. And I think one of the things that I heard tonight and I've heard before is just that our actor, older seniors and people that may not be using the internet or may not have these things. So when I think about them trying to understand how we reach them, and then I'm even thinking about, even though it takes a long time, we were talking about the text message or the alert system, and we're never a hundred percent sure if they say we're gonna have a storm and we do or we don't or whatever. So even the precautionary or the proactivity of just maybe sending it and the prepare if this is to happen, here's what you can do, here's what may be on its way. That way, no matter what happens, people know that, okay, there's a possibility. Here's what we need to do. We need to prepare instead of getting it late saying, here's what you need to do now. So I think even if it's, you know, a false alarm, I think people would rather know than not know. So I think that's something I think possibly we can do. And then thinking about the active seniors, you know, how can we get them, you know, to opt in? Or how do we, how are we, if they're not opting in or filling out claims and things like that, and they haven't been to meetings, you know, for no fault or their own, other than maybe not being able to get there, is there a way that we have the data where we can see where our active seniors are located that maybe those communities we haven't visited yet? Can we get to those communities and try to listen to understand those communities that we know we haven't reached and we know we have active seniors in that area? And then the last thing I had was about the, the composition of the committee. And when we're talking about just listening and having, you know, those voices of the community at the table, is it impossible for us to go, and I could be wrong, from seven to nine, and then adding two more residents at large to have three on the board instead of one? Just because I feel like having a couple more people on there. And I know no one's going to silence anybody or anything like that, but I'm just thinking about in transparency, transparency and communication and then listening, it seems like more voices want to be at the table and present when we're making these decisions. And I don't know how tough or what that's like, but I figured I'd ask and make, we still have an odd number and I feel like that could be beneficial to have a couple more residents on.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think we've heard more public comments on this issue than any other ever. So, you know, there's definitely feeling out there, certainly people who are on the ground.
Yeah. And from different experiences, different parts of the, of the town, you know, maybe represented. And just, yeah, having just more of a voice where I know people that are going to be on this that are also residents that may not be the resident at large, which I understand, but those residents at large, I think if we can make that in a room for a couple more, I think that'd be something I'd be in favor.
So I do want to be clear, right? That this committee is taking a look at our stormwater bylaw. And so.
How much create maybe language or, or when we're.
Well, it's to ensure NITM's compliance, again, which has to do with the quality of the stormwater, not the volume or how we remediate that. And then changes with capacity too. I mean, so it is, it is looking at both, but I just, I just think we have to keep that in mind so that people don't come in with an expectation.
As long as we lay it all out there.
Focused on one thing. I sometimes worry about single issue kind of focus.
Yeah. And when we're coming for interviews and things, you know, just with the charges, what's going? Go ahead.
Well, this just, I'm just saying this does talk about stormwater capacity. Yeah.
Yeah, but they need to understand that it's a portfolio of issues, not just that. So as long as they're clear.
I think that'll just give them more reason to want to opt in because they're getting the full picture. So they'll be able to understand more. And then if that, what they're getting can communicate to neighbors and things like that, then I feel like more voices, more people at the table and be advocates for the work that we're doing and can better explain it to maybe the people we haven't reached or they may know. I think it's only beneficial.
The other, the other role on this committee that we really haven't talked about is there's also a role for a builder in town. So I just want to make that clear as well. We will be also looking for builder.
In some of the neighborhood meetings, there's some thought, love, engineering types were very interested in hearing about this. And I think this is up to rally. So be more engineers.
All right. Any other questions? Because if there are not, then I would welcome a motion related to the charge and composition as so amended.
Right, amended to.
Go to nine.
Still nine, okay.
All right. So I'm presuming that that's the sense of the board, I think was what I felt. Okay. Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the charge and composition of the Stormwater Bylaw Working Group as amended to add two more at large numbers.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. So I will encourage everybody to keep their eye posted on their volunteer opportunities.
Absolutely.
And apply and our dynamic duo will interview more people and appoint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday.
Happy holidays.
Other one, it's lecture, that one?
Thank you. Okay. It is now the town manager's report.
I just have a few items, Madam Chair. I wanted to just tell you of a, of an opportunity. We had our leadership group, which is department directors and assistants and sort of others, about almost 60 people. We had the opportunity to have a training session over at TripAdvisor in their facility. And Matt Gabry, who's their chief people person along with real estate, gave a presentation on the future of work and how TripAdvisor had really made it through the pandemic and is retooling the way that they're setting up their operations and setting up their work. And it was a really great opportunity for us. Some people had never been in there. Many people had never been in there. We've hired, it's shocking how many people we've hired since the pandemic, since we had been in there. So just another way that TripAdvisor has, we've been working really closely with them on a number of issues and that was just a great opportunity. The second is the voters approved what's called the fair share amendment, but which many people refer to as the millionaire's tax. And that has provided, we were noticed today that it's giving the town of Needham 426,865 dollars in additional checking money. It's real helpful to us. So there's a.
It's coming through. Any educational dollars?
This is the portion that is the chapter 90.
Okay.
So it's contrib, it's being distributed in more than one way in terms of the population and the number of road miles. So yes, the, the income over 1 million is to be spent on public education and transportation. So this is a transportation piece. I don't have the, yet.
I'm wondering what the education piece, I haven't seen it anywhere. So.
Yes.
I'm hoping there's some education dollars there.
So there's many, many calls on this, especially since, as you know, we're probably relying on chapter 90 for more of our public works infrastructure issues. It's really good timing. And the last item is that we've sent out a notice that our small repair grant program is opened up again. So folks over 60 or people with disabilities can make health and safety improvements to their homes and they can get up to $5,000 for that work. The round, applications have to be received by Friday, January 12th. So this information is on the newsflash. It's available on the website. It's available by calling our housing specialists, but the, the best way is to find it is on the housing page on the town's website or to call our office.
And I'm sure that the Council on Engineering will be including it in their newsletter and all those kinds of things again. Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. That brings us to some items for board discussion. The first item there is to recognize town meeting action on the climate crisis. Heidi asked a question at our, your last meeting, right? Was it just our last meeting? I think our last, maybe two meetings ago, maybe two meetings ago. So about the vote of town meeting from October 2021. And so what we have before us this evening is what that vote was on October 25th, 2021, that town meeting voted overwhelmingly for and asked the select board to recognize certain things. The select board never formally did those things or never formally recognized it, but we did in fact proceed forward with doing all the actions. So the question at this point before the board is, should we in fact officially recognize that vote of town meeting? And we have crafted a goal, which is goal number seven in our goals, that's related to creating a sustainable, thriving and equitable community. So let me turn it, open it for discussion to see where people are on that. Marcus.
Yeah, I had a question. So I'm just reading and I don't know if I'm wrong. So I'm reading that, you know, we are going to recognize that town meeting declared a climate and, you know, ecological emergency. So we're recognizing it, but do we have the ability to declare it as well? Because isn't that kind of what we should do? I'm just, I just want to be sure that I understand if we're recognizing it, we're saying that it happened and we hear you, but then we're not declaring it ourselves. I just want to understand.
So we can do that. I will be candid.
Yeah.
I've said I'm not in favor of declaring an emergency. I don't think that the world is looking for the town of Needham to declare a climate emergency. That's the first thing. Okay. And I will also say that it's my understanding from a lot of research that I've said that we are continuing to put pressure on our young people because we talk about how awful their lives are going to be when the climate dies.
Prepare them.
So in my view, I'd rather focus on doing the work, right? This vote does acknowledge a climate crisis, which again, probably isn't my favorite choice of words, but so I'm hoping that we can come to a happy medium in some ways.
So I love that we are and have been doing the work. So, you know, in some ways I think we can do both or both and to continue to do the work, but also recognize where we are and, you know, how bad things are. And I think in the last couple of months and, you know, yesterday, in just the past couple of years and how these storms are turning into thousands to hundreds to 20, you know, so it's getting worse, not better. So I would love to declare, but I would love to possibly, oh, sorry, love to recognize, but I would love to also to be exactly what the town meeting said that they see and what they're declaring to kind of be on the same page. Since I think so many people understand that this is gone in such a direction that is making us have to cause for pause and, and act and, and talk about these things. And of course, I don't want to scare the future and I don't want to do all those things, but I want the future to be prepared for what we're handing over to them. And, you know, what's going to be their place in helping us do this together and not by themselves.
Well, I think my views are probably pretty well done. I, I agree that I don't want to scare anyone, but I guess it would be my preference to at least recognize that the state exists, that we have a climate crisis on our hands. Maybe I think declaration on the part of the Needham Select Board that there's an emergency is maybe a little, we didn't discover this. So I, I don't think we're charting any new territory here. But I, I do think that the bottom line is that I think we're doing the work. We've, we've treated this like the crisis that I believe it to be. And we've included that in our goals. So I could, I, I think that's the most important part to me.
Where that has happened.
I think we've walked the walk. So I'm not so worried about. I, you know, I'm not kind of would say, if I'm not nervous of saying, you know, do we have to declare an emergency? I think it's a crisis, an ecological disaster, but I'm happy we've done all the work.
We'll continue.
And we'll continue.
I would, I would just say, my focus is on what we're doing, not what we're saying. So I think we are doing the right things and I view that as the most important and what we say as less important.
So I guess the question is, are we changing the language of the vote? Or are we going with the vote that we have in front of us? Is there a suggestion? That's, that's, I think, the question that the board can take up.
I'm happy with the language of the vote that we have on the agenda. Marcus, you okay with that?
I'm, I'm thinking out loud and, you know, if, knowing that we're doing the work, I understand and I get. And saying that we're doing the work makes sense as well. And I think I was just trying to more be in an alignment with what town meeting has declared as, you know, one of the bodies that they look to. If it's changing the language is something that is not going to pass and it doesn't make sense to change the language.
It's completely up to the board, right?
I think I heard from before. I think we heard what everybody said. So we will keep the language as is.
I, I think this is a goal that we worked hard.
Yeah.
On what went into it. And, and it was also trying to recognize where that vote came from and what we are doing with, as I keep saying, with all due haste and prioritizing the resources to move forward. And I do think that that has been a goal of the prior boards and of the current board. In fact, to make a difference here and to move this agenda forward based on that vote from town meeting. In that sense, we heard that message. So.
Do you want a motion?
I would welcome a motion with whatever words you want to put in it.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the select board recognize the vote of town meeting on October 25th, 2021 and reiterate its goal, number seven, that Needham is a sustainable, thriving and equitable community that benefits from and supports clean energy, preserves and responsibly uses the earth's resources and cares for ecosystems. Needham combats the climate crisis, prioritizes sustainability, including transitioning from fossil fuels to clean renewable energy, encourages the efficient use of natural resources and protects and enhances the biodiversity and vitality of ecological systems.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. So the next question is committee reports. I don't know how many committees have met since the last time. CIPC, we already sort of talked about a little bit. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add.
I would like to talk a bit more nuanced conversation.
My initial reaction was, oh, boy.
Marcus was settling in.
Marcus was settling in.
I was like, all right, here we go.
Well, I, I'll chime in. The Hone Committee, the Housing Needham Advisory Group, met on the 11th and discussed the, the modeling that our consultants are doing for us that will lead to the models that are presented to the public and available for public comment at our next public meeting, which is January 18th. So that's a good thing I asked her. The, the community meeting, okay. So we just, generally speaking, the discussion centered around the Hersi MBTA Station District and the Center Business District. And I think we had some very good, diverse opinions and conversation. And we're looking forward to our next meeting, which is tomorrow. So tune in because you'll get to see the, the models from the consultants. Very exciting.
Have our models gone through any kind of a run through the state model, this understand compliance? Is that tomorrow?
Well, they've, they've done a bit of that so far to sort of show the mechanisms that are involved in creating districts that are compliant. And then now we're getting to the point where we are creating actual candidate compliant districts for approval or for discussion, for input.
Okay, awesome. I look forward to continued progress on that one. And I look forward to having a plan that leads to the creation of some actual housing, I hope.
Amen.
I hope so, yeah, so.
All right. I have a note here on Quiet Zone. I will note the Quiet Zone Committee has not met, but I can provide an update. So some work has been going on in the background. The town and GPI, who was our selected consultant, have executed a contract. And the town has provided GPI with the background materials that they need to do their work on Quiet Zone. GPI has already completed aerial surveys of each location so that they have that work done before there's snow on the ground and all of it gets hidden. If there ever is snow this winter, we shall see. The next priority that they've got is they are working now to connect with the MBTA, Keolis, and the Federal Railroad Association, not Association, Agency, wrong A, and to schedule a meeting at the golf club, which is our most, continues to be our most challenging grade crossing. And ordering new traffic counts at all the various locations. It will be interesting actually to see traffic counts in kind of this post-pandemic world and understand the shape of that traffic. So that will be interesting. We're hoping that we can circle back with that committee sometime in mid-January to schedule a meeting to start to at least report out. And again, the goal is to get to town meeting with a warrant article. There is a placeholder for a project that's in the capital plan. But we're pretty sure the amount will need to change once we have better information based on this new work. So I just wanted to give people an update on that as we head into the holiday. I know that there is continued interest, significant interest, probably maybe even higher than the stormwater level when I think about overall comments that we've heard related to Quiet Zone from folks in town.
Could I add one thing to that? One of the things that's come out of the work of the committee and was put in the request for proposals is that there, the town will consider safety measures that make it safer at the crossings. In the past, we had looked only at the quad gate option, but there, there may be options that are a safer option than now that aren't completely dependent on tying into the electrical systems and the railroad systems of the MBTA, like channelizing barriers and things, which could be a cheaper option. And that's, I think the working group sort of crystallized on, there may be options, as long as they're safer than what exists today, which is required by the FRA. So, you know, we're hoping that maybe one or two of the crossings could benefit from something like that. Not to get anyone's hopes up, but we'll find out.
And, and Kate and I have also had discussion about the MBTA and, you know, when can we sort of get to them? And more conversations about the train schedule because one of the other, we, we realize that one of the other exacerbating issues here is that they came out with a new train schedule, you may recall in early October, and that new train schedule actually added more late trains to the schedule. So the amount of sleeping time that people had in Needham was reduced again, all right? And you may recall that when they were putting in the hourly schedule, which we all appreciate having a fixed predictable hourly schedule. This is actually a good thing. It's just the lack of sleep in the middle of the night that's challenging with it, okay? But when they put in the hourly schedule and added it on the weekends, the town, after consultation and public hearings, had asked them at the time to consider stopping the train at Hersi so we wouldn't be bringing the train all the way back and forth on the weekends, again, with a goal of giving people some uninterrupted sleep. It may be time to go back and revisit and say, you know, you changed the schedule again and there was no consultation with us. How can we help you to understand how significant the impacts are of the decisions you make on the town of Needham? And we need some better partnerships. Just as we're working to have better partnerships with Eversource, we need that better partnership with the MBTA as well.
We learned of washer car, washer trains.
Washer trains that come out to get the leaves off the trains. And they schedule those in the middle of the night when they aren't scheduling trains, which meant we were getting the washer trains at 2:30 or 3:30 in the morning. So there were nights where people were just having no sleep. Yeah. So it's, it's a challenge. And we are the one town with all of those horns, as you listen to it, coming across town and going back across town. All right, anything else?
Oh, yes.
We're ready.
I did office hours.
Oh, okay. Actually, something happened, got it.
It was eight people. I mean, there was a line in, in the hallway. And everyone said, I mean, all, everyone had different issues, but everyone said, this is great. It's great that we can meet people on the select board. And it's just a great way to be a, it's just a sort of set in the, in the calendar and they all love it. Also did the Needham Branding and Town Seal Committee, they're doing the scope and purpose and sending it out to get a consultant. And we are doing a seal and we're doing a logo, the two different things. So it'll be an interesting process. And then I did flood meetings too. And I'll be doing more, I think, too.
So I think we should build a map of all the different flood meetings we've had to give people a sense of where we've been. Is that something you've been talking about too?
Where we can go next.
Transmit it over.
Yes. I think, you know, we had people tonight who, who said, you haven't met with anybody. Well, that's actually not true. There's been, I'm so grateful for Kevin for doing all these meetings because frankly, he's done far and away nearly all of them, okay?
About 15 of them.
15, is that what you're up to?
Yeah.
Okay, so far.
So far. There'll be more after yesterday.
Kevin is going to be intimately familiar with every low spot in the town of Needham. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
So he can now describe them all.
And they usually happening on the other side of hills, on the one neighborhood. And they say, oh, you wouldn't believe what's happening. I said, yes, I would, because I talked.
Right, right. So there are definite characteristics. And to, you know, this question about are there ways to prepare? I do think that we're working with neighborhoods that are in fact learning, starting to learn some of the tools that they have to prepare for something that has really been a long time issue in those neighborhoods as water comes down the hill to their low spot, so.
And again, one thing I have noticed, if I have just a minute, we have a lot fewer trees. It's amazing to count, when you talk to these neighbors, you can count the yards without trees. They're all, I mean, either new construction or the trees got cut down. And I know we want people to plant trees and there's a town program for it, but I'd also tell you that acorns are free and go at it because we look clear cut and trees take up a lot of water. That does make two cents.
There you go. Any other committees input, feedback? All right. Well, then we are, we actually have a couple of weeks in a row off, right? That only happens on occasion, but a couple of weeks in a row off. So we'll wish people who are celebrating now happy holidays and people are traveling in upcoming weeks, safe travels. And we will see you back in the new year and be all about it again. Thank you to all of our staff for keeping us going and keeping everybody in town hall going. I know that so many people are grateful when they come onto the office to be well welcomed and to get answers to their questions. So thank you to everybody for that.
Yes, yes.
I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Even Kevin could offer it if he wanted.
You know.
I already did it, since I said so moved.
You could second Kevin.
I will second.
He's generous, look at that.
That's a Christmas miracle.
Anybody else want to object? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Happy holidays.